Good evening and welcome to the September 27th, 2021 Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, September 27th, 2021 Board of Education meeting be approved or set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Laurel, this requires a roll call, please.
Director Borcherting.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Lee Slinger.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
President Humble. Aye. Next, we'll turn to Superintendent Bush for her report.
Thank you, President Humble. Good evening, Board of Directors. Good to see you this evening, and good evening, guests. Just a few updates in my report tonight. First of all, we have launched a new website, for those who are not completely aware of that, that was launched on September 14th. We're going to have a brief overview of that website this evening in one of our leadership updates. There is a new URL for our website, which is www.crschools.us. And for those who aren't familiar with Google calibration, it takes about 30 days for Google to calibrate data from an old web address to a new web address, so that data continues to roll over. So if there's anything on our new website that you aren't able to locate, do not hesitate to reach out to us. We are here to help. And certainly you can reach out to our communications department, or email department, if there's information that you aren't able to find. But that calibration should continue over the next 30 days, as those search engines use the data and it keeps logging up to the top with Google. So our former website, which is cr.k12.iu.us, we're just going through the transition with the new website. And then, just a recommendation would be to our families, is to make new bookmarks from that new website, which should be helpful. Secondly, on Friday, we did provide another mitigation update to our community. A lot of questions about how would we remove masking measures. First and foremost, we would, of course, follow any sort of updates from our community, and of course, the state of Iowa. So if there would be any sort of guidance that's provided to us, we continue to follow that guidance. There were four major factors that we shared with the community on Friday, and what we will be committed to do is, on our COVID-19 page, is to continue to show these four major areas, and where we currently stand as a school district. This is data from, every Friday, we update our COVID-19 page, and that data goes through Thursday night, so that we can provide it by Friday morning. So you can see right now, one of those measures is our own COVID-19 positivity rate, being below 2%. We are currently less than 1%. We've dropped by 40 cases in the past 10 days, which is really good data to see it trending that way. And Lynn County has also had some trends in the most recent days of a downward spiral of cases. So things are headed in a better direction, and we are glad to see that. And I think folks really just wanted to know, if we have a masking mitigation measure, what would be the data that would cause us to remove that masking mitigation measure? A future consideration, which was also shared on Friday, if we can get the accurate data for students who are vaccinated, obviously are 12 years old, and older students who have access to vaccination. CDC guidelines says, in an environment, when 50% or better of people are vaccinated, you wouldn't have to require a masking mitigation. But obviously, that doesn't apply to our children who are under the age of 12. So we certainly want to keep those considerations for the future. And then lastly, just an update on Maple Grove Elementary, the construction is underway. If you haven't made it your way over to the Jackson site, we're adjacent, you'll see the construction for Maple Grove. Exciting construction progress there. And so, a year out from now, we'll be opening our second new elementary. And just thanks for all the efforts to Buildings and Grounds Crew for the coordinations on that, and Jackson team, and Jackson families who are having to navigate construction. So thank you to that neighborhood, and the efforts of Principal Duffy, and our Buildings and Grounds Crew. So that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Are there any board reports?
President Humble, I have a brief report. This last week was the Iowa Association of School Boards meeting, at which point, the Iowa Association of School Boards reviewed the legislative resolutions for the upcoming session, and those will be released shortly. Number one was mental health.
Oh, okay. Any other? Thank you, Director Borcherting. Any other board reports? I would like to say something on behalf of the Board of Education, and it's important for us to be clear on our position. We have consistently been proponents of local control decisions. We have governed by providing feedback and input, and we have sought legal counsel's advice throughout the pandemic. District adminis-- we are in full support of Superintendent Bush, district administration, and building administration, as they continue to manage during these difficult times. The Board of Education fully supports Superintendent Bush in making decisions that are in the best interests of our students and staff.
What about the parents?
Who's paying for it?
When are you going to ask the parents?
Excuse me, you're out of order. You're out of order at this time, please. Thank you.
I'm just asking a question. Parents weren't mentioned in there. Isn't that important? We're talking about our children?
Please continue, President Humble.
Okay. Next, we will move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. Board Secretary Day, do we have any speakers registered to address the board this evening?
Yes, we do.
Before we hear from those who have requested to address the board, I'd like to remind you to please state your name and address for record when called. You will be given five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer, and inform you when your time is up. Additionally, in order to abide by the open meeting law, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. Laurel, will you please call the first speaker?
Our first speaker this evening is Tanya Johnson, and she's representing CREA. She's here to talk to the board about masks.
Hello, Tanya Johnson, Cedar Rapids, 3816 Riverside Drive. I am the president of Cedar Rapids Education Association. But my comments tonight are for myself and for fellow teachers. On behalf of myself and many teachers, I want to say thank you to Superintendent Bush and the school board for putting the mask mandate in place in our buildings. With our elementary students and half of our middle school students unable to get the vaccine, having masks helps our staff, and hopefully, some students feel more safe and healthy. Another thing I want to talk about, having to do with this, is our sub-s shortage. I'm not sure how many people in our community, or family, or parents, understand what a shortage we have right now. We have buildings that have teachers who have to cover classrooms, they cover during their prep time, they are unable to do their coaching jobs that they need to do. And so, because of this shortage, I feel it's even more important that we have our masks on to keep us safe and healthy, so that we are not having teachers that have to be out for 10 days because of quarantining, or even if they have symptoms. So again, thank you for making what I consider to be the right decision, and I really appreciate that on behalf of me, the students, and other teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel McGrail. Daniel is here to talk to us about police in schools.
Hi, Dan McGrail, 3324 Wenick. Just one thing, could the board members mind raising their hand or something when they're going to talk, because it's really hard to tell who's speaking with the masks on. I just wanted to-- I'll be short. Having been a teenage boy long ago, I remember how discouraging it was, and how fearful it could be, going to school when you're worried about getting beat up. Unfortunately, children are not innocent seekers of knowledge all the time, but also wild animals that at times require discipline. And I believe you're asking a lot of teachers to put themselves at risk in breaking up fights to protect students. So in considering the placement of police officers in the schools, I ask the school members, school board members, to place the safety and security of students and staff before any other theoretical concerns. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig Seely. Craig is here to talk this evening about ideologies, agendas, sources, and teaching methods. Craig, thank you.
One thing I want to say, not on my time, is that, sitting back there, I can hardly hear the school board members talk. And same problem last time, and you might want to have the person that has the volume on this mic, turn it up a little bit. The second person, I could hardly understand, and I do not have a hearing deficit, so that's all I can say about the whole scenario. I lost that much time? But anyway, I'd like to talk tonight about race. And I didn't look up in my Strong's exhaustive accordance about whether the word "race" was even in there, or in the Bible, as we use it today. I don't, along with those other four words that I talked about last time, yellow, red, black, and white, I think we should change it to different shades of brown, because I've never seen anybody in the pure essence of those four colors. And the same thing applies to race, and I can prove it to you. The American Biological Society decided to do a DNA analysis of all the communities of the world, to see if there was enough difference in their DNA to even validate the word "race." And there's all the civilizations of the world, I couldn't think of that one word. And their scientific conclusion was that there's not enough DNA difference in all the civilizations of the world to even validate the word "race." So why are we using it? The thing is, we shouldn't be using it, because it's, the word "race" and those four colors are used by people of suspect, I could say corrupt, but I will just say people that are suspect, to divide us, because every division for them is another fundraiser. And so, come and send us money, and vote for us, and we will solve this division, which they already created in the first place. And you know, we always go to the wrong source. A lot of our answers are in the Bible, and this one is also in the Bible. In the verses, Acts 17:26, "God created of one blood all the nations of the world." I'll say it again. "God created of one blood all the nations of the world." Without considering marital law, you, everybody here, everybody on the planet Earth, are blood sisters and brothers. Now think about that. And we wonder why we can hate creations of God. Remember Genesis 1:26, "We're created in the image of God, Christ, and the Holy Spirit." Let us create man in our image. It's referring to the plural Hebrew noun in Genesis 1:1, Elohim, and that refers to the Trinity. God, the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost are one. So what happens when we hate, we can hate their behavior, et cetera, et cetera, but what happens when we hate a person? Well, when you go home tonight, I don't want to quote the verse, because it is so powerful. When you go home tonight, read 1 John, the third chapter, and the 15th verse, "It will scare the bejeebies out of you if you hate a creation of God." Hitler was probably a very loving baby, but he was almost beat to death by his father. He was beat severely by a Jewish teacher. And, you know, cause and effect. So, and this deal that they try to divide us with, with global warming. Look at Genesis, Psalm 78:69, "God established the earth to last forever." And when you scare little kids saying the earth is going to be destroyed in 12 years, it's emotional child abuse.
Mr. Seely, excuse me.
Now think about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I didn't get my full five minutes, but I forgive you. I'm just kidding.
Our next speaker is Anne Hagee. Anne is here to talk about payroll wages. Anne?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. I'm Anne Hagee. I live at 316174th Street, Atkins. I'm a parent at McKinley State Academy. And I am here to read a letter from a parent of one of my students, and it goes as follows. Hello, my name is--
Anne, can you pull that microphone down just a little bit? There we go. Thank you.
Better? Okay. This is from a parent of one of our students. Hello, my name is Ronald Hayes. My son is Matthew. I adopted Matthew over seven years ago. Since then, he has grown so much. He was practically nonverbal, not able to eat by mouth, and not toilet-trained, just to name a few of the hurdles we have run into, but we have made great progress. He attends McKinley Middle School, and his teacher is Aaron Hollingsworth, and his parent is Sally Lovett. Since he started going to public schools here in Iowa after the adoption, I put a lot of the progress Matt has achieved in that time to his teachers working with him, hand in hand with the parent educators in their classroom, with their one-on-one learning plans. Without these people to help the teachers, one teacher could not make progress for all of these children. As shorthanded as this country is on teachers, we also need the parents to assist and make sure our kids are learning a customized learning lesson plan for each child's level. I hope we can take care of the parent educators, so we can keep them around. Everyone needs a wage they can live off of, and what these folks make is not enough. I think if the taxpayers could step into a special needs classroom and see what it takes to get these kids, and what they need to learn, I think they would agree that they all need our gratitude and a decent hourly wage. And, let me rephrase it, and a decent hourly wait, rate above what a fast food worker makes. I don't know if you know the starting wage is $12.28 for a parent educator. I can go to McDonald's and make $14 an hour. I can also go to Nordstrom's and make $18 an hour, Target 15, and a few others. I would hate to see what would happen in this world if we lost our future, and our future is our kids, whether they are special needs or not. They all deserve an education. I see the progress in my son in all areas of reading, writing, intellect, speech, and behavior towards others. If he was not in the social setting, working with the teachers and the parent educators, I believe my son, for one, would not be as progressed as if we didn't have them all working with them. I hope this opens the eyes of the folks who pay our parent educators and our educators in all. They're the heroes, and they deserve to get a decent pay for the hard work they do. Thank you for your time, Ronald Hayes. Thank you, guys. And thank you for the mask mandate.
Our next speaker is Billie Jean Chavez. I believe that's how you say the last name. And she's here to speak this evening about vaccines, masks, and SRO officers.
Good evening, everybody. I didn't come prepared, but as a parent, I would like to address the board. How many of you guys have any elementary kids? By show of hands? Just one? So how come we can't decide for our own kids that are school-aged kids for mask mandate? None of you have school-aged kids in elementary? I only saw one hand up. How many hands here, everybody has kids, school-aged kids in elementary? My kid comes crying every day, saying that he doesn't want to wear a mask when he's outside. They always tell him he has to wear a mask. I don't know what the confusion is about the mask mandate. I feel like us, as parents, should vote, just like we vote for a president, just how you guys get voted into being a board member. I feel that us, as a parents, we should have that right to vote if our kids should get masks mandates or not. Last year, I had my kids do virtual for a whole year. I disinfected. I would come home, throw everything, disinfect myself from my feet all the way to my head. And I was like, okay. For the first year, I was like, we survive. And then I was like, all this confusion between politics and everything, and now I'm confused. I don't know if I'm safe or not. So that's how the way my kids feel. They come to me every day, and me as a parent, I'm standing here today to be their voice, because I'm tired of calling people, nobody, everybody just, it's a whole mess up. Like, we don't know, like, the email, I don't know who sent out the email on Friday. It caused so much confusion. All you guys got to say, hey, the mitigation ended. We only had 10 days to decide whether we were going to mandate the mask or not. We are here today. I don't know why it was so confusing. A lot of parents were asking, well, does it mean that we don't get to have the mask? The question at Cedar Rapids, whoever runs the Facebook page, all they can refer to us, click on the link above, click on the link above, but no straight answer at all. I also heard, when I came in, that they're going to start trying to mandate the kids to get vaccines over the age of 12. I hope that's not the case. In reference to the officers being in kids' school, I'm from Texas, so it's a little bit different. When I moved out here, I didn't know that you guys had police officers in the school-aged kids. Like, that was kind of scary to me, because where I'm from in Texas, they have a whole district for securities for the district. So they have a whole district of securities that focuses for security for the kids, whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school, to assist the teachers. And I feel that's something, you know, with all these grants that are coming in, left and right, you know, donations, that should be something that should be in question for the security of any kids, whether it's my kids, any kids here, anybody, teachers as well. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Duffield. Melissa's here to speak about masks, vaccines, and safety officers.
Also, I request that Anna Fogle get to speak, as the form was taken away from her before she could fill out a form. She might be your last one.
No, I don't have a form from her.
Right, because it was taken away before she could fill out a form. Actually, it was right in front of her, so. My name is Melissa Duffield. I reside at 2109 K Street. I am a community member that has been in athletic coaching for 24 years, of ages five years old to 26. I also have been in athletics myself for 27 years, including Division One and playing in Europe. Noreen Bush, you once said that I was the most dedicated person that you thought you ever met to the health and well-being of children, so I hope that you listen to me today. You asked me why I was not a teacher in your district, and I would say, take a look around, because this is why I would never be a part of your district. What I see today, and what I heard in the last meeting, was nothing but politics. It had nothing to do with the health and well-being of children. Masks equal abuse. I have witnessed this firsthand. In 24 years of coaching, I have never had multiple kids drop in my practice. I had two athletes last year during the mask mandate that went blue and collapsed, to the point, one of them, we almost called an ambulance. I had another athlete that ended up in the ICU. All three of those athletes, we were tested repeatedly for COVID. They didn't have COVID. The one thing they had in common is they had masks on, and they were in an athletic environment. I had an absolute increase in anxiety and self-harm, including athletes that visually were cutting themselves, that hadn't been cutting themselves in years. I had another athlete that began to take off her shirt and began to claw at her stomach, something I have never seen in athletics. I'm also a former college coach, and have seen athletes go through extremely stressful environments. Later found out that this child was sexually assaulted. So as she was screaming to me in her practice, that she felt like a hand was over her mouth, there was no discretion for her, as a young woman, in athletics or in schools. And in case you guys haven't noticed, what you guys mandate transfers into athletics, and then is forced upon every athlete and every coach in our district. "I can't breathe" is a sign of abuse. I'm-- So here's the deal. Your choice was either ignorance, or it was intentional. You quoted last time the CDC, and you also related to the fact that you might want to do medical analysis and possibly lead into procedures, which I wouldn't even touch as a coach that has coached people from five years old to the age of 26. So the question is, you know, when you're teaching that a child doesn't have a voice on whether or not they put something on their body, you're also teaching them to not speak when they are being bullied, when they are being touched inappropriately, when they have any part of their body that is hurting them, or family issues at home. You are telling them, no. Having the chance to say no as a child is also a form of freedom, just like for the rest of us. So it is either intentional, or it is ignorance. So I have compiled over 10,000 pages of medical science that I'm going to be giving to you in the link. I'm also going to be encouraging people in the community to put their voices on that drive. They can put their child's voices or their voices, and they will be heard. Because ideally, you guys don't want to listen to the voices, because you made the call overnight without anybody coming in to be able to speak. Everyone deserves to have a voice. When you are giving that information, you can choose to either read it or not. And if you choose not to read it and still make your choice, then it will still be intentional, which means you guys are liable for criminal conduct, which is equating to abuse, because right now, you have teachers in your district that are doing corporal punishment. They are telling children that they have to put their hands on their heads and leave them there while their mask is off, and when their hands get tired, they can put their hands down. That is illegal in the state, and it would be federally illegal. Also, discrimination in asking children to say whether or not they're vaccinated in front of their classmates is also going to be dealt with. And if you guys have paid attention to your policies, you've already violated your conduct, code of conduct. You have done this before, right, Noreen? Because we have an actual staffer that's still allowed to coach to this day that has abused athletes in this community. In fact, she told them to write--
[applause]
In fact, she told them to write their own obituaries, and this board said that that was perfectly okay. And your conduct of what you're doing of forcing masks or vaccines on children and separating them out, and whether they do or they don't, is leading for their parents in the future to have to write an obituary for them. Because this is the class that has a 300% increase in suicide rates. And I have seen nothing but personally, and will testify in any court, of what I witnessed for the first time, all in one year, some things that I have never seen in 24 years of coaching. The choice will be yours on whether you continue it or not. And it will not be a mistake, whether it's intentional--
Thank you.
--or ignorance.
The last person registered to speak this last is Lawrence Winklowski. Lawrence is here to speak with the board tonight about masking.
Lawrence Winklowski, 4234 Merle Road, Northeast. Tell a story here. Back in 1990, we lost our first daughter, Lois and I. It was from natural causes, but when that happened, we questioned everything. We questioned our faith. We questioned which hospital we went to. And then, after that, we had to deal with the pains of, you know, has other people had children, has other, you know, people lost children. And that, you know, there is a 16% increase in divorce to families who have lost children. When we-- When we, we had a quarter million dollar hospital bill, and if it wasn't for my wife having insurance back then, which was really good compared to what corporations give out now, it would have been pretty tough. You know, and, you know, we were both professionals, so we had a little more background. But, you know, also things that happened is, you know, people didn't want to talk to us. They ignored us. We sort of, because they didn't know how to deal with it. And that, you know, whether it was family or friends. And, you know, I get the fact that, I guess, one thing I'll say, what I'm saying tonight doesn't affect people with special, children with special needs or children that, because I have no idea about that. But part of this is, you know, a certain level of complacency. Mask is not something that is worth losing your child over, potentially losing family members. If you expose a family member and they get sick, or their child gets sick and dies, you're going to kill that relationship. I don't care if your family member was your best friend. What if your child goes to school and a classmate gets COVID because they weren't master that? You know, that ain't fair. People talk about masking being a, oh, a right, and that. But, you know, with right comes a certain level of responsibility. And people seem to forget the responsibility, because the people who are for masks or want ma, you know, don't have a problem with masks, they want life, and so why should we potentially give them a, you know, challenge that, you know? And I just can't underst, you know, I get the people about a certain level of freedom and some of the things other people said, but is this principle so important that you're willing to risk the life of your child, or the life of someone else's child, or the life of your, some other loved one? It's not. I mean, it's a terrible situation. And what makes it terrible even worse is that we have a government, it doesn't matter if you're Democratic or Republican, who's just totally made this situation worse, because you never know what they're saying is true or not. We have a press that can't go ahead and explain what the facts are. They just, you know, they sort of want to go ahead and, you know, just sell newspapers, and that. So, I think it's a good thing that school board put masks mandates in place, because I don't want to see anyone get COVID. I don't want to see people die of something that's preventable. I don't want to see, you know, most of the people, I don't think they could afford the hospital bills nowadays with the deductibles and that, and especially after last year's duration. But the other thing I'm a little concerned with is your reinstatement policy. I think it's too lenient. And that, we just going below a level, wait till it gets high, and then going above it? It should be lower, and that, so we need to kill the virus, get it out of the system. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like to pull for comment, questions, or a separate vote?
President Humble, I have one item. I'd like to pull just four comment. It's BA-22-011. It is part of the handbook review, and the specific policy that I want to comment on is the employee expression policy. My understanding is that this is a new policy required by law that we need to include. There, there are just a couple things that are a bit concerning to me. It feels like some of this is fairly subjective in terms of who makes the decision as to whether this interferes with district operations. The procedure for using this policy, I think, needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. The second thing that is of concern to me is due process, and whether staff members have some type of due process, and that's not included in the policy in any way. So, I just think that would be a good addition, so everyone knows the roadmap if we have to actually execute this policy. And then, I'm also curious, the policy refers only to social media, so I'm wondering if, I know it's old-fashioned, but if, if an employee is using print media in a similar capacity, if that falls under this policy as well. So, I understand the need for the policy. I would just like to see us continue to refine.
Director Garlock, thank you for the information regarding that regulation. That did come to us from the Iowa Association of School Boards, went straight to our district legal counsel, who presented it to the policy review committee. I did share with them your concerns this afternoon, so I will wait to get a response and see how we can move forward. I appreciate your feedback, yeah.
And thank you, Laurel, for that. Thank you.
I mean, we're tabling that one, then?
You could decide to table the, just that regulation, or if you would like to move forward with the rest of the items in that, or I can bring the whole kit and caboodle back at our next board, I mean, whatever your pleasure would be.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Do you need a motion to table?
No, you don't, we don't need a motion. I can just, I can take that out and bring it back to the next board. We'll just put that down as item due.
Yeah, if you can do that, I think that would be preferable.
So, we will pull that, and that will be tabled until the, just that regulation. Okay. Are there any other questions or at all from the board?
Thank you, Director Garlock. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion at all? This is a roll call vote.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Reesinger?
Director Nurse Brock?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
President Humble?
Aye. Next, we will move on to administration. Next is the amended 28E agreement with the city of Cedar Rapids for the SRO program. Superintendent Bush, do you have any remarks regarding the agreement?
Just thank you, board members, for your continued input, and certainly from the input from our community members as well, which has helped us through this process. So, the amendment, we reviewed at the last board meeting. There were some questions around the middle school programming, and so just to clarify, in the pocket item and the 28E agreement, that the, the recommendation is to continue with the seven SRO, current FTE, but two of those SROs who are currently full-time in our middle schools would serve in a consultative model to our middle schools and elementary schools, as we lift proactive measures with run, hide, fight, as well as civic engagement, and be on-call to support the schools that do not have permanent placement with an SRO. Therefore, the remaining five full-time SROs would stay as put, with the rest of the recommendations of implementation as the board has directed, to continue to collect data around all of the goals that have now been set in the new agreement, as well as the rest of the amendments to the program. So, thank you for your constant input, but I would open it to the board, to the discussion of this particular contract, and feedback from you.
Do we have any questions from the board?
I have a question about the data that's been designed for the measures to be collected on. Who defined that, what that was? Was that the Cedar Rapids Community School District, or was that the Cedar Rapids Police Department? Was it agreement between the both that are saying, here's the measures we're looking for, here's how we're going to record it, here's how we're going to document?
So, it was our student data that was driving our measures. So, it's our recommendations as a school district, but then we worked on it collaboratively with CRPD as to how are we going to collect that data, and what would that look like, feel like, sound like, as well as the continued professional development support as we respond to that data. So, I would say initially, it was our own student data that drove those metrics, but then collaboratively, we've worked with CRPD on what the metrics would be, that we would continue to measure.
Metrics that'll be reported back to the board on a monthly basis will be the metrics that have been formed through this collaborative measure, designed to measure against system indicators, defined goal of programming.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And that we will collect the data. So, for example, if there should be an incident within a school, that school would be responsible for recording that information, but then also reviewing the results of how we responded and supported a specific situation, together with our SRO team and administration, the leaders within that school.
Okay. And will that be the same across schools?
Yes.
So, we're using shared practice there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? What I can appreciate is that we've had open dialogue to discuss how to move forward with our SROs, so I appreciate all the input from the board, from the superintendent, from administration. It's been a lot of work, but everyone has come together to, to really make it better. And I, we want our students to thrive in the district and feel a comfort. So, I appreciate each and every one of you and everyone that has been involved in developing and putting together this agreement.
I know we've had some conversations about replacing the, those, those resources in the middle schools, because in essence, those middle schools will be down one FTE. And I was wondering if you could review that once again, and how quickly those would be in place for the, in those schools, please?
Sure. So, those two SROs, the FTE would still be available on a consultative model. So, they'll be there to be able to serve as needed, both proactively for lessons, as well as if there's an incident and need to respond. But in addition to that, we have, and I'll just speak to the two middle schools that are, would be in question, as the other four middle schools did not have designated SROs. So, we have several different staff members, so engagement specialists and facilitators that are in both of those buildings, as well as, of course, our school counselors and administrators, which have been given all along, as well as the professional development de-escalation strategies for all staff members. But in addition to that, we have restorative practices with some of our community partners. Kids First Restorative Practice is one of them. That's at McKinley. We have Tanager therapists at both of our schools, both of the middle schools. Beyond the Bell is an additional restorative program at McKinley, and Foundation Two Mental Health Crisis Services, as well as the Triple AP Program at McKinley. I mentioned this, Tanager's also at RCCBA, so is what's called Leaders, Believers, and Achievers, that serves between 50 and 60 students, proactively with what we'd call replacement strategies at Roosevelt. And they also have the Triple AP Program. Kids on Course is also a targeted support program at RCCBA and Foundation Two. But I think even as we move forward, both schools are very interested in social workers, and we're, we would like to explore that as an opportunity. And I would say that's true for several of our schools, would like to explore social work supports for caseload work and support. But again, our current SROs, those two FTE, would be available on a consultative model.
And with the social workers, I mean, those would be the, the new pieces, correct?
That would be new, those would be new pieces, yes.
How quickly do we think that we can get that up and running?
We can allocate ESAR dollars for those immediately, actually. If we could, I know that, I would say that's true for many mental health support programs, as well as social work programs, finding the personnel to do it. But currently, these are the, those were the replacement strategies that we've had in place, and the continued strategies, but these would be two areas that we'd like to explore.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. And we talked a little bit about this, but I think it's really good for the building administrators and staff and parents to understand how they, how these schools can access the SROs. It's not, I guess my question is more, how, how do they interact with the SROs on a proactive basis, so that they are addressing concerns that might be coming to the schools? Administrators typically have a really good finger on the pulse of what's going on. If they need support, and they know they're going to need support, what's available to them as it relates to the SROs?
So, with, so in regards to the high school program, or the? Oh, I'm sorry, the middle school. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. So, that we have established, if adopted, a potential schedule to work with those two SROs and the supports for the schools. And so, on a proactive measure of how they would be providing lessons or support, targeted lessons specifically in crisis response, civic engagement, and supporting students. In addition to that, we, what was really important, and CRPD highlighted this as well, having them centrally located, so that they could be easily accessible. And so, we brainstormed what that could look like. One of the recommendations was, was to use the substation, which is right across the street from Co College, which is very central to our district, and that they could be easily accessible. In addition to that, I would say, with our emergency operations manual, we, many times, Board Secretary Day and myself, as well as, I would say, other district administrators, received calls from our buildings. I'll just use one of our elementaries as an example. There was a water, a water main.
Break.
Break, thank you. Water main break, and we needed an emergency response. That's not a school with an SRO, but we needed CRPD's assistance. We have the opportunity to call them as a direct line of service, and then they come and support us, and as they, I could, you know, Officer Keeler's here tonight, a great working relationship. But in addition to that, these two SROs would also be a direct response, so that that could be an immediate phone call to one of them before we even go to the CRPD phone line.
Are the SROs allowed on campus if, if the administrator just feels there's something brewing, right? Can I, can they call them and say, you know, we need you here today? And if it's not the SRO, somebody can be there?
That's a very good point. The, we've experienced sometimes, whether it be a neighborhood concern, or a disruption within the environment, to have someone on staff, and many times, they'll just come at the top of the day and be there for additional support.
Man, I just know that we've invested time at this board table since July, talking about this subject, and I just really appreciate the amount of information that's been shared. The police department came and spoke. Nicole Quaker came and spoke multiple times. Tons of data has been shared, so I was just going back through some of the information that we had. This is, in just the two years that I've been on the board, really feels like one of the most difficult decisions that's put in front of us. But I, I really appreciate the recommendations that are made. So many of them are focused on education, which I think is a part of Nazro's triad method. So, just appreciate the amount of time that's been put into this. I know it's not perfect, but I think it's really important steps forward for us.
I would. I have an additional comment, and that is just that, I am so proud of our students. This issue that ended up with a, a program audit was brought to the attention of the board by students. And I am just so proud of our students for being able to self-advocate, to be able to articulate what their experience is, and communicate that. So, just a shout out to the students for doing a good job.
Director Garlock, did you have a?
Yeah, yeah, I do, just have a comment. I think a lot of the, the stories that were related to us concerning SROs involve the relationships that SROs had with students. And those are, they're valuable relationships. I am really glad to see the support services that are going to be available to our students to foster healthy to foster healthy relationships with adults. Because in my estimation, if you have an adult in your life, whether it's an SRO or a therapist or a counselor or a lunch lady, whomever it is that believes in you and supports you, that's what our kids need. So the fact that we're putting all of these resources in place, I think makes this, uh, a win-win for the, for the kids. And that's what we're here for.
Couple things. First, I just wanted to comment, um, and this is just for board business going forward. You know, we came with this contract, but it wasn't published until today. I just think going forward, especially on issues where we had so much public concern, we probably should publish a contract like that. At the same time, we're publishing the agenda. I know we got an email as I was driving here today from someone who's putting a lot of work on this issue and came and addressed the board. And I would have liked to have known that person's thoughts before we were up here to vote. But that's just, you know, uh, future practice, hopefully. And kind of before we go forward, I just wanted to ask, has there been any talks with the city? Because following up on what Director Reesinger said, um, about the additional services. And the Chief of Police came and said he wants to, you know, see our schools be safe. But we have to be cognizant of our funding situation. And so all those services that you talked about, additional services that we might need, they all cost, you know, money. Um, and the ESAR dollars aren't going to last forever. We got a lot of things, sorry. We got a lot of things that we would like to, um, uh, you know, spend those on. And so just, were there any talks during the process with the city about what our relationship would look like without us providing funding for SROs directly? Just what kind of agreement would we have? You know, and, and not necessarily looking to hear all of that tonight, but just kind of know going forward as we're reviewing the data, what are our options at the end of this contract? Or at any time, uh, what a world without us providing that funding would look like? Because, well, I think it's important to provide funding for safety. Again, there's only so much, uh, money to go around. So were there any talks like that?
So, uh, not so much for future forward, more on the current, uh, contract. But as we look at, um, the funding stream, I mentioned this comes out of our at-risk, um, dropout prevention, uh, bucket. And that is a categorical bucket, just like the, um, ESAR dollars are a categorical bucket. But you're absolutely right, those are categorical buckets. So I think, um, to Director Borcherting's point earlier, we're going to have to use our data to see the results. One thing that has been very prominent with the board is that, is seeing the results of our partnerships and wanting to know with all of our partnerships, what are the results from each one of those partnerships as we allocate dollars to our partners? So that will have to be, uh, part of the driving factor is what are the results, what's the return on investment for student results? And that will be our responsibility to make sure the board stays abreast of that data. So I wouldn't say it was a future-forward, um, uh, financial conversation.
Uh, just following up on what you said there about it being for at-risk, uh, funding. Is that something that we had measurement for before? In terms of was this helping keep kids in school? And if not, can we, uh, I don't know how we would measure that necessarily. But if that's what it's for, I'd like to have kind of an ex, you know, because we've heard general statistics about SRO programs and involvement with the criminal justice system and how that affects graduation rates. But I don't know if we heard anything specific to our district with the numbers.
So I would say that pri, the prior contract did not have the goals articulated in the contract at all. It was more of the nature of the relationship and the services being provided. And it didn't articulate what, what exactly we were measuring. And now it does. Well, the amended agreement does. So I agree with you that we weren't articulating that.
Okay. Um, and then the only other thing, I just wanted to make a comment as well. I think they're good first step, these recommendations. But I think we as a board kind of need to change our orientation towards this. And it's just been on my mind over the last, um, you know, month or so as we've really been digging into this. The admini, administration, you guys have done a great job. It's, you've really brought forward all the information we need. But I think we should be here discussing our first month of data. I think we as a board should have insisted that this could done before the school year if possible. You know, we could have put more time in during the summer and really got it done, uh, because I think we should treat this kind of as a crisis moment for the students in, you know, our schools. Because we have the data of the disparate arrest. We have the data over students who are feeling unsafe. And that's something that, like I said, we shouldn't have. And staff, uh, you know, going, that's something that we probably should have tried to address before the school year began. And so just to the rest of the board members, you know, as we get the data for month to month, we need to review the data. And we have to be ready to act if necessary. I, I really appreciate the work that's done. But like I said, thinking of this issue and the impact on students has really, uh, gotten to me over the last month. And so what I wanted to say is at December, maybe in our board meeting in December, at the very bare minimum, we should do a full review, you know, of the couple of months of data that we have at that time. And if we think that something needs to be changed going into the second half of the year, I don't think we should be hesitant to do it because the data that we had so far. And, you know, reading, um, an article today about suspension data and stuff like that too. We, we have our responsibility as a district as well.
That's right.
And so, but that's something that, you know, we have to work on changing internally. But when it comes to the SRO program, uh, you know, we really have to be willing to act and change it. And if it comes to, you know, canceling the contract with the city, we should have to do that if the data doesn't support that the changes that we've made are making a difference. Because like I said, it's, it's unconscionable what's going on with some of our students. And I know, and you, you did a great job. You presented our options to us. You, you weren't afraid to say, hey, you could give 30-day notice to the city. But I think it's up to us as a board to act if that's going to be, uh, the case. I don't put that all on your shoulders to make a political weighty decision like this. And so, like I said, if it comes to December, I think we should really take a look at it as a board and commit to that here.
One other piece that could, um, be in alignment with that is the professional, the collaborative professional development we've designed for, uh, leadership staff and our SROs together. Um, especially around, um, social emotional supports and restorative work and, uh, crisis prevention intervention work. So we can, um, provide that update as well. I know that the, it was our first, um, student survey, um, included in that pan, uh, panorama survey. So we could initiate that as well, perhaps mid-year.
Yeah. Cause the data and everything we've got has been great. And so let's keep it coming and let's really, uh, you know, take initiative on this if we need to.
And I, are, are there any other comments? Cause, uh, with Director Marsh, you're right. We as a board, we need to stay on top of it, of what's going on because of, of the data. So I, I truly appreciate your comments. And that will be something that, uh, we will be looking forward to as a board, the, the updates. So we can see where we're at and adjustments we may need to make. So thank you for those comments. Any other board members?
Will there be, um, an opportunity for the building administrators to weigh in on how things are going as well?
Yes. So that is that continuous professional development. But also, um, each one of the executive directors are checking in with those, uh, principles to see how the implementation of the recommendations will be going. And then we are going to have consistent, uh, check-in meetings with the entire team, that being admin and our SROs. I guess we'd call it a temperature check of, this is, there's, there's some heavy lifts, some shifts in practice here. And, uh, we want to make sure that everybody's getting the support that they need in order to best support our kids.
Are there any other questions from our board? Seeing none. All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye. This is for the amending the 28E agreement with the City of Cedar Rapids for the SRO program.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Thank you all. Uh, we'll move on into, uh, the annual request to the School Budget Review Committee for Special Education. Do we have, uh, any questions for Dave? Does the board have any, just, are there any questions at all?
I don't have any questions, but I would just like to make a comment. That this is an annual occurrence. The special education deficit is an annual occurrence. When the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act passed, it was, uh, promised to be funded at 60%. It is traditionally only funded between 12 and 13% nationwide. So that causes the deficit that occurs every year.
Any other questions for Dave? All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye for the annual request for the SBR, uh, C for Special Education.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Uh, the next item is an annual presentation regarding the fiscal year 2021 financial highlights. And I'll turn that, uh, over to Dave.
Thank you, President Humble and the, uh, board. I'm pleased to be here before you to kind of go over the financial highlights for the 2021.
Okay.
Uh, school year. And, um, so, um, here we go. It's kind of hard to see. I'm sorry about kind of small numbers here. But, um, as you can see, like every year is unique in its own self. I mean, you look at FY '21 versus FY '20, you can see a lot of differences when you look at where we ended up all funds. We ended up, uh, in FY '20, a negative $7 million. And this year we added, we're at a positive almost $7 million, 6.6 million, 6.7 million. So it's very unique. Every year is unique and there's certain things that impact that, why things are different. One of the things I'd like to point out real quick here when you look at the revenue sources, you can see the federal revenue is up 32%. We can all pretty much guess where that's coming from. It's our ESAR funds that's driving that. And our, uh, other financing sources is up like 61%. And that is we issued some bonds for the construction of Jackson. That's kind of where those two big numbers are coming from there. That, that really changed the view of one year to the next year. So when you look at all, uh, this last year, uh, you look at all of our funds. We have, you know, they're listed here, general fund, all the way down to our, uh, other fund 60s, which are our daycare funds. And you can kind of see where we ended up by fund. Right now here, uh, general fund, you can see we ended up with a positive of 4.9 million when you compared revenues versus expenses. And activity fund is 128,000. The main driving factor for activity fund is that we actually did a board-approved transfer of funds from the general fund to activity funds to help with activities that were kind of running in a deficit mode. And not all activities were, but, uh, but some of the activities did run a deficit mode. So we transferred $160,000 from the general fund to student activity funds per year, uh, authorization to do so. So that actually pushed it into a, a positive 128,000. Without that, you could see that we would have been a negative for student activity fund. And, um, our sales tax funds, well, I could say, that was a fund that typically of last year, we actually were in the deficit mode because we were spending down bond proceeds. This year, we actually brought some bond proceeds, about $16 million. Uh, and we also refinanced some bonds, which actually showed our expenditures, revenues exceeding our, uh, our expenditures by 165,000. And, um, debt service, you can see that we're running a deficit mode in debt service. I would say most, that is due to, um, uh, we'll talk about that in a little bit. But that's mainly due to probably, uh, uh, delinquent taxes collected for our, our debt because, um, of the, uh, COVID impact to collections. And nutrition fund, you can see that's a, a big deficit. And some of that is due to IPR's liability that we have to book and also to the circumstances in which, uh, we were operating our nutrition fund and not getting as much revenue as we typically would. So. So when you take a look at the main deficit surplus, uh, what's driving some of this? All funds, like I said, this year was a positive 6.8 million. And last year was a negative 7.3 million down below. This year, the uniqueness of the year is very strange year that we were dealing with. And, um, from, uh, COVID and the derate show that were impacted the district. And some of those impacts actually benefited some of the line-out and budget numbers. For example, our utility costs. We actually saved about 1.2 million in utility expenses than we would otherwise have expended because of the derate show and COVID that we were able to have our utilities turned off or lowered or didn't have utilities running in some of our buildings for a while. It's because of the situation of the derate show. And, uh, then with the COVID, we've had, uh, several employees that took year leaves of absence. And, uh, because of the situation we were in, we were able to not replace those just because we were doing so much virtual learning. And we actually had bus drivers take, you know, leaves as well. We weren't, we were able to not replace them initially because we weren't transferring as many kids. So many kids were doing virtuals time. So those are some of the driving things that we're looking at. And also our buildings did not spend as much money they typically would spend. You know, so we actually saved some dollars that typically would have been spent, we did not spend. And we also, uh, reallocated some money to ESAR funds that were qualified, like for, uh, some of our software purchases and whatnot that we were able to push off to ESAR funds and save about $140,000 for that. So those are a lot of the driving factors to why we ended up in the positive in the general fund. And, um, and then if you look at sales tax, it is a negative, not a whole lot, but because of, we had the bond proceeds. And debt service, like I said earlier, uh, is due to delinquent property taxes, why we're running in deficit mode on that. As those collects, taxes will be collected, we will, that will, uh, we, uh, turn that. And nutrition fund, we have, um, less, we didn't have many days in school, a lot of our programs, but we were still paying our staff. So we actually had, uh, less money, uh, being collected versus what we were paying out. And we also had the liability, IPR's liability that we had to book, uh, in the nutrition fund as well. So just real quick, for FY '20, you can see some of the things that drove our deficit in the general fund. We had our deficits, uh, from special ed and ELL were $4 million combined increases in our deficit last year. And this year, our special ed deficit only grew about 1.2 million, I believe, 1.1, 1.2 million. And, um, then the sales tax fund and debt service fund were due to, uh, construction new, uh, financing of new elementary facilities. This is just a trend. I highlighted the save fund. So you can see the years in which you have bond, construction projects happening. You can see, uh, you actually have a lot more fund balances and save. That's what that's due to. General fund, you can see we're at 33.6 million. To, almost at the same level we were back in 2018. And our nutrition fund took a hit about, uh, when you take out the GASB 68 requirements for IPR's liability, you take that out, nutrition fund did take about $600,000 hit this year due to, uh, the, uh, circumstances we were in. And then you can see down here, just the highlights of what all the funds pay for, pretty much. pretty much, you can kind of see what's over, I won't go through those, but that's what these funds are used for. And we always like to look at the general fund. We all know, we always hear this concept about 80% of our budget is paid, is salaries and benefits. That's true on the general fund basis, that's where that's coming from. Not all funds, but the general fund alone, yeah, about 80% is salaries and benefits, 10% is un-purchased services followed by supplies and property, supplies of 4%, property of 2%, another of 4%. Revenues, on the other hand, majority of our revenue comes from the state aid and categorical funding through the state, 53%, followed by local revenue. Local revenue is property taxes, you're looking at tuition-in billings and those types of things is what comes in our local, and you can see that we do have a surplus, like I said, in the general fund this year, about 4 point, almost $5 million. What does that do to our unspent balance and fund balance? You can see, unspent balance is what we have legal authority to spend at the end of the year. And you can see, we're about to where we were in 2012. We're just over 10% at, and back in 2012, we were about 10%. And, but you can see what happened in 2012, things changed in a hurry negatively in the district. And so we have, over time, we have built it back up to where we were in 2012. And our fund balance is, is about, we were flip-flop here. We had good unspent balance, we didn't have a fund balance to spend it all. Now we're flip-flop, we have fund balance, but our unspent balance is almost to the level we were in 2012. And so why do we have such a big fund balance, people might ask? Well, part of that is there for cash flow purposes, okay? And we want to make sure, that also is a part of our calculation of our solvency ratio, which I'll go to in a minute. So those are kind of the main reasons why we carry a fund balance for that, for cash flow, and to make sure our solvency ratio is where we need it to be. So our solvency ratio, you can see, it's the, a lot of the driving forces are what we talked about earlier in our general fund, some of our expenses were not as high as we expected them to be, and so that did play an impact onto our solvency ratio, and it jumped up to 13.9%. Is, as, and moving forward, we knew, we were planning on that taking a drop a little bit this year, and we were kind of planning for that because of the circumstances that we were in. We might be able to feather that out a little bit because of SRR dollars, but, you know, we, we are expecting that to drop some. And then we're talking about long-term debt. One of the things that we're looking at is, we always want to look at what's our legal debt margin? How much do we can borrow if we needed to borrow for new facilities? And that is a calculation that is determined by legislature, that it's 5% of your total assessed valuation. So when you do that calculation and you subtract what we actually have in outstanding debt as of June 30, which we have $109 million, we have about $438 million that we would be able to borrow against for new facilities and improvements. So now I'm ready for any questions you might have.
Yes, and thank you for the comprehensive overview that you have given us. Looking good.
I have a question, is the public comment done? Are we going to get a chance to do public comments? There's a lot of people that still want to do public comments. Is it over? Are we being shut off?
The public comment period has ended, yes.
It's ended?
Yes, thank you.
Why did only seven people get to speak?
Can we please go on with our report, please?
I'm sorry, what?
Please continue with the financial report.
Excuse me, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a taxpayer. Everything that you guys are
Excuse me, we are on order.
No.
Order, please.
Excuse me, we have other people that are concerned, they want to, they want to voice their comments.
Please continue with the financial report.
Only seven people, they were not told that only seven people were allowed to talk today.
Continue with the financial report, please.
Does the board have any questions regarding Dave's update?
They did, they did.
Dave, I have a question. So looking at the solvency ratio or the unspent balance,
Yeah, he did.
That unspent balance that's between 5 and 10%, and that's the board identified goal, is that where we want to be, or is that something that needs to change?
Oh, it's not for you to shut down because you guys aren't going to listen to us, we're going to keep talking. Like, I'm not, I'm not, this is not the way it goes. There was only seven people that got to talk. There was more green sheets that were handed to you guys.
Please continue with the report.
We deserve to be heard. We deserve to be heard. This is always about money. It's never about our kids.
Go ahead and answer the question, please.
I like the report that you had said that you guys saved money. Our kids were at home, with virtual. I'm glad you saved money, but we're taxpayers. I never missed a day of work while COVID was going on, neither did my husband. We kept all the lights on here, we kept the water going. Let them be heard, let us be heard. There, there was nobody that said that there was only seven people that got to talk.
Please continue with the financial report questions.
Any questions?
Director Borcherting,
Don't even interrupt me. Let them be heard, let us be heard.
Your, your question about the 5% to 10%, that is,
It's always about money.
That was a threshold that was recommended by IASB years ago, and I was talking about, maybe that needs to be increased higher than the 5 to 10% to a higher level, but nothing came about those discussions. So that's kind of where we've been, is at that recommended 5 to 10% range. So we are above that right now with regard
200 has no place for complaint. Allow no area for complaints with section
We can take a recess if you would like.
I'm sorry.
You can take a recess if you would like. We'll take a 10-minute recess if you would like.
What we're going to do,
They can just let, they can fill out a
I'm going to call a recess for 10 minutes for the board, please.
That's fine, because, you know, we'll, we'll be out here waiting for you too.
No.
You know, Stephanie, twice 6,000 people have been injured by this vaccine. 6,000 guys, 6,000. Do you care about that? Do you not give a shit about that? And this is the CDC's own information, people. John, we'll be here when you, we'll be here when you get back, because we deserve to be heard. These are our children that you are messing with, ours, our future. I'm glad that you guys saved money last year, I'm glad. Like I said, I paid my taxes, my kids were in front of a screen the whole time. It wasn't for the teachers or the kids. You guys are all elected here, we, we put our trust in you. We deserve to be heard. Absolutely. Masks actually destroy the immune. Anybody who wears a mask has a disease in common, like, that is a fact, that is a fact, a medical fact. Whether you like that science or not, that's the damn, that's the truth, it's the truth. And More kids have died of suicide this year, and I have a friend that had lost three family members in a car accident and did not die from COVID, in a car accident. Those were our odds. We deserve to be heard. Wants to speak, somebody needs to speak. It's time.
Why, why, if the COVID is so scary for everybody, then why do a lot of you have fabric beautiful masks on? Because those are the things, in the schools, why aren't there medical biohazard? I want them, you know, to get rid of those masks, because the masks supposedly have a very serious risk for your body. So if you're going to do it, go do it, and also the eyes are very close, and all children need to wear tremendously sealed goggles.
Fiss from your eyeballs, woman.
You get iris, they're very close.
Have they given
It's a biohazard, it's a biohazard.
It's a choice.
And also, if you're going to mask up the kids again, go over to Governor Hinkle and then provide all those classes online, so our kids can read. You've stolen their identity, you've stolen their voice. It's disputable.
Do you guys care? Do you care? No, you don't care. You don't care.
Follow policy and procedure, and Noreen, by the way, you're administering a procedure that you did all of this, and you made the exact same decision by yourself. I have that on a recording. Which will be against all of your policies and your material. There is no hierarchy, is the exact quote of this board.
We're stealing our kids' voices. This is not a procedure that's not about money.
Yeah, we know what you guys got for COVID relief. That money should go towards those security officers that need to be in these schools. These kids and teachers need to be protected. You guys go there and you sit there for a day. You try to monitor them, you try to take care of them. These kids are doing this because they're acting out because they've been muddled. They need help, they need us. We know what's best for our children.
I would like to say something. Public comments, and this is something that we've done at every meeting, they, people can write their comments and submit them, and this is the way that we've always done it. And at 5:30, the comments are presented to Laurel Day. So we weren't cutting off anyone, this is a procedure that we've always followed. So I wanted to make that clear, that we did not limit it to seven.
We had more than seven brought up the green sheets, where are they at?
Cut off before 5:30. And then you guys took them, and I tried to sign them, and they were like, nope. No more, I don't know if there was a deadline, like you had to
5:30.
To be able to fill it out by 5:30?
Continue with your statement.
I'm sorry.
Those, those, those rules weren't printed anywhere that we do that. They're on the website.
All right, on the website.
As I had stated, that at 5:30, they were picked up and they were delivered to
She said, give it to
To Laurel.
She just said, give it to, and I have to, me and her have to look at each other like, who do we give it to? And that's why I walked up there and said, who do I give it to? Which, it should be more organized, I mean, you have signs of, you have your masks, you have signs
And, and it is organized, and, and I don't want to go back and forth, but
There's nothing organized, nothing is transparent. You're not transparent, your policies and your convenient website exchange change that then made it look like that there was no board section, and I have screenshots and videos of that, that's on you guys. And when you have no section, it's empty for parent complaints or legal random applications, pardon me, that is on you as well. Those sections are blanked. But let's be clear, you are individually liable and individually can be sued, and you already have corporal punishment going on in your schools right now. Why your teachers for non-mask wearers and discrimination? That's a big problem for you guys. And then with the data that it is abuse, that it affects the development in the brain, it affects them mentally and affects them physically, that is also
I would like to thank you for your comments, and we need to move forward with the, what's next on our agenda? And that is a new website, and I, and
If I can all just resign now, we'll just replace you. I mean, honestly.
You did not hear parent voices before you made your decision. You did not follow your own policy procedure. And again, Noreen, I'm telling you, your staff is blaming you.
So Every time you guys talk to the school attorney, we paid for it. We are the ones that pay for it. It's not coming out of your guys' pockets, yeah, you're taxpayers too.
And I, and I understand that, and I don't want us to go on and on, so what
They wouldn't have come to this unless we spoke.
What I am going to do is that I am going to adjourn the meeting, and thank you all for attending.
Thank you.